I guess, she said she saw you and she was walking the dog. That's what she said.
Okay, I'm gonna call us back to order. This is reconvening our November meeting, but I think we're gonna rise and say a pledge. And please remain standing for a short moment of silence. Please have a moment of silence for our first responders and those service members deployed. Turn it over to the Borough Manager for continuation of the budget discussions.
All right. Good evening. So we're going to continue tonight's discussion. What you have in front of you tonight is a couple revisions that came out of the last budget meeting. Nothing too major, but we did talk about a couple line items, and I highlighted those in red. So we'll go through those. But before we do, I want to take a couple minutes here and address some of the misconceptions that have been circulating the public since the last meeting. And I've got quite a few here that are listed. So just want to take a couple minutes and address those for the public record. So the proposed 25% tax increase. All right, we're all aware that .5 mils represents a 25% tax increase. But what you really need to understand with that is percentages are misleading. So if we take into account that New Freedom's tax rate is 10 mils, a .5 mil increase is now what? It's 5%. So really, percentages are relative to the base number. You have to keep that in mind. Saying that it's a 25% increase is a 25%, yes. But what is the base number? And in this case, the base number is 2 mils. So smaller number, an increase, it's going to make a difference. It's relative to the base number. There's additional comment that this is the third increase in taxes in four years. That is correct. There have been multiple increases. But what you need to remember is you go back to 2020, and there was actually a reduction in the millage rate without an accompanying expenditure reduction. So reduced taxes didn't reduce expenditures, which forced another increase in 2021 in taxes. So you're just making that back up. And additionally, the tax increase for 2023 was necessary due to the growing demands of emergency services. And even those, that increase didn't cover the increases that the Borough faced in emergency services. So constantly, you can see how this is already kind of putting us behind, and those increases were necessary. There's also a comment made about unnecessary York Water expenditures. So we all understand that the Borough purchases water from the York Water Company on a daily or on a daily, monthly, yearly basis, and that's a contract. I want to clarify that that connection is not completely unnecessary. While our wells are more than sufficient to supply the fresh water needed on a daily basis, the connection provides a failsafe as required by the Department of Environmental Protection. As previously noted in multiple other meetings, as soon as that contract comes up in 2026 for renewal in 2028, we are going to begin talks with York Water on how we can address that contract, potentially reduce the amount of gallons we're required to take, or look at another setup. But at this time, there's no changing that contract. Along those lines, if we're talking about a millage rate, you need to keep in mind that the water system operates completely separate than any general fund tax increase. This is segregation of funds. The Water Fund is a special revenue fund and has no impact on your real estate taxes. There's also mentioned about the water tank replacement project and going from $1 million in 2021 to over 3.5 million, and that it's still not completed. Well, right, the water tank is not completed. The initial estimate of $1 million for the water tank was not accurate. It was based on a previous estimate for a tank that was replaced many years in the past, and it was not an accurate estimate. Our staff, we're currently evaluating the necessity of keeping that tank to begin with. If we don't need it in the system, there's no point in rebuilding a brand-new tank for $3.5 million. However, we do need to keep in mind, and it's been noted before, that, excuse me, that the Department of Environmental Protection may require that we keep that tank in service, at which time then we will have to build a new tank, and the cost right now is $3.5 million. So again, there's things that we're evaluating, but there's no authorization given to build a tank or the need to build a new tank at this time. We're still evaluating it. It's still in process. Talked about the pickleball court. There was a comment made that originally the pickleball court was $6,250 in September of 2020, and it morphed into $400,000. And it's not even being placed out to bid. Well, it's not being placed out to bid because there are no projects. There are no plans. There are no bid specs because the project has been put on hold. That initial estimate was basically just to overlay a section with asphalt. There were no other amenities at that time. There were no fencing, no nets, no lighting, no court lines, no stormwater improvements, and most importantly, no ADA access. The decision regarding the pickleball court was deferred pending the completion of the feasibility study and master site plan. Should the community desire for pickleball courts to be installed in Marge Goodfellow Park, I would assume council will task the Borough Office with obtaining outside funding at that time. It's also important to note that a project of this magnitude absolutely has to be publicly bid. There's no way it can be done any other way. And at this time, as mentioned, there are no bid specs, there are no plans, and there is no project to be put out to bid. Additionally, there were comments made that Borough employees have a $10,000 spending limit without any preapproval from council. The $10,000 spending limit without council preapproval is just incorrect. The Borough Manager's purchasing power aligns with the adopted purchasing policy that was approved by council in November of '21. Expenses exceeding that criteria demand council approval. For reference, I'd like to read the stipulations in that policy. "The Borough Manager of the Borough of New Freedom is authorized to make the following purchases: Those included and within the annual approved budget by Borough Council, not requiring public bidding and within 10% of the originally budgeted amount. Unanticipated expenses relating to the maintenance and repair of buildings, vehicles, equipment, and network infrastructure not exceeding $10,000." So the $10,000 relates to maintenance and repair of things when it breaks. "Expenses during emergencies including disaster declarations that directly relate to said emergency. Purchases and expenditures that do not meet the above criteria shall require additional consideration and approval by Borough Council during a publicly advertised meeting." Make sense? Another comment with regards to the shared recreation director with an employment package valued at $113,450. It is correct that that is the expense line item for that program. That recreation director position was established through an intermunicipal agreement with Shrewsbury Township and forming the Southern York County Regional Recreation Commission. Contrary to the misinformation, the projected annual employment package of $113,000 does not solely encompass the individual's salary benefits. This figure includes all comprehensive costs with developing, implementing, and managing both current and future programs and special events. New Freedom's portion of this expenditure in 2024 is approximately $17,500. The last comment that was made was "Council leadership refuses to disclose the salaries of Borough employees to elected members of the council that are requesting them." Again, this is just simply not true. Council nor staff have refused to disclose salaries. This information is public record. During the November 13th meeting, a request for salaries was made, and that information is included in your packet tonight. Finally, just one more topic. It's really important to acknowledge that municipal tax rates are often the lowest among all real estate taxes. They also offer a significant per-dollar to our residents. Every tax dollar has a direct impact on the residents in New Freedom. It's also worth noting that the average household in New Freedom pays eight times more in school taxes than they do in municipal taxes. The average tax bill is approximately $500. That goes to New Freedom Borough. The average tax bill is over $4,000 that goes to the school district. Again, as mentioned earlier, our assessed millage barely covers the emergency services that are continued to be provided to the residents in New Freedom Borough. Just keep that in mind as we look at the millage rates. Thank you. So on your packet that you have tonight, the first page in there is a summary page. That has been updated based on the numbers that we discussed after the last meeting. Not a lot of change, but we can go through those line items in the different funds. So if you go to the first page of general fund revenues, again, as indicated there, we highlighted the amounts that have changed in red. And I can go through those amounts. We moved $75,000 from real estate taxes in the current year or the proposed budget year in line item 301100 to a new line item, which is 301105, and that's the EMS, proposed EMS funding tax. So it was a reduction of $75,000 and the addition of $75,000 in a new line item. Questions there? Additionally, going down into your Act 511 taxes, we updated the estimated through numbers through the end of this year for earned income tax and real estate transfer tax. Based on trends, you can see in '22, our current year earned income tax was 551. It looks like we're going to be a little over 540 for this year, noting that we jumped or increased from $450,000 to $500,000 for 2024. And that still provides a buffer that if earned income tax rates were to drop, there's still about $40,000 to $50,000 worth of buffer in that account. That did obviously help the bottom line item as we look at the summary page. Any questions? We also added a line item 331500 for the quality of life finds. It's a very small number, but we added it in there as a line item. Revenues, page three. We did update the estimated through for building permit fees. We do anticipate that being larger than that number for 2023, but keeping it conservative for 2024. Questions on revenues? I believe that covers all the changes that were discussed during the November 13th meeting.
Before we get out of revenues, first of all, I want to thank you for your presentation. I thought that was excellent. It covered pretty much everything that's been on Facebook and out on the street. I wanted to add to that, that a lot of people have been saying inflation. This council does not think that this is being caused by, our tax increase is being caused by inflation. 35% of the tax increase is going to SRPD, 25% is going to FIRE, 25% to EMS, and 18%, only 18% is going to other. There's also been a lot of discussion, not sure why, but a lot of discussion about other boroughs. So other people have been saying, well, Glen Rock hasn't had a tax increase. No, but they cut their police services in order to not have a tax increase. And that caused us to have to pick up about another $20,000, $23,000 in police services from Glen Rock to keep the SRPD budget balanced. In addition, Stewartstown taxes are higher than ours. Again, I'm not sure, not sure why other municipalities' taxes are an issue. One last thing. At our last meeting, a comment was made about Shrewsbury Borough's budget. And I would like to thank Brian Switzer, Mike Sharkey, and Fred Ardegas for speaking with me to correct the comment that was made. It was stated that Shrewsbury Borough has over a $1 million shortfall, but they had no discussion of raising taxes. While they do have a shortfall between income and expenses, they're making this up from a planned delay of 2024 projects into 2025, not from a reserve, as was stated. They have no huge magic reserve. And even if they did have a $2 million reserve, if they have a $900,000 shortfall this year and next year, the reserve is wiped out. They noted that this was most likely a one-year solution to a long-term EMS requirement that will probably result in an EMS tax in 2024 for the 2025 year. So their EMS tax, again, I think their contribution is $109,000, if I remember correctly. And ours is $75,000. So we're enacting a tax in order to pay for emergency services this year. Only part of this information was provided during our last meeting, and it ended up painting New Freedom in a poor light. And I'm going to make a request as the chair that we stop misleading this council and our citizens, and we all cooperate to make New Freedom the best town that we can be.
Thank you again for your presentation.
Okay. Moving into expenditures, unless anybody has any clarification needed on revenues? Okay. Nothing on expenditures in the general fund on the first page. On the second page, which actually is labeled at the bottom as expenditures, page 14, we did update the number for police services to $770,000. And also increased the line item 411501, which is the EMS service donation from the $23,500 to the $75,000. That has been requested by Borough's EMS. Going through expenditures, there's not any other proposed changes until you get to expenditures, page 23, which is the recreation fund. There was a request made to add two new line items, one being 452249, which is event services for concerts in the park, and 452250 for appreciation events for their programs.
There is another fund, rec fund, that we hold. Am I correct?
There is a reserve fund similar to the water and sewer funds. So the water and sewer funds hold tapping fees. The recreation fund is holding recreation fees for new lots that are created within New Freedom Borough. So that money has to be used for capital improvements within your recreational facilities.
At this time, what is that? How much? 60, 60-some thousand?
That's shown on your, in your budget summary. It's $46,000.
Forty-six, okay.
Yeah. That's shown as assigned fund balance in your budget summary, and that you'll see that in for the water and the sewer fund as well.
But that can only be used for capital expenditures.
Correct. Yeah, same with your tapping fees in your water and sewer. That has to be for system upgrades, not just your everyday operating expenditures.
So that's from the developer, right?
That's correct.
I think we had $100,000 expenditure for road repaving for 2024. Is that really gonna be enough? And what would, what are you, what are we planning on using that for specifically?
Those streets have not been prioritized at this time. We need to look at what we had proposed, I believe, back in 2022. That was cut and relook at that, relook at those streets and roads to find out which ones we need to prioritize and program for '24.
I really think that we should add into that the municipal parking lot at Marge Goodfellow Park.
We can, but that has to be general fund expenditures. Like, we can't use highway, we can't use liquid fuels for that.
That's true, yeah. I think we're gonna need something to be done there. What's that? Chip? That's only chip and, what do you call it?
Torn chip.
Torn chip, millions down there.
I think it was milling's office.
Milling's, it's getting, it's getting pretty bad.
It's done really well for being.
Yeah, it absolutely has.
Did some of that $46,000 that's in rec be used for that, for its own or not?
Sorry?
The $46,000 for the property or for the improvements of the park, did the park, did that be used for that or not?
Is that officially part of the park or is not? That's what I thought.
I thought you said they were putting it in the park some months.
It's not. I checked it out.
Just under the Borough.
It's a separate parcel, isn't it?
Okay.
Yeah. If it was together and it was specifically designated as Marge Goodfellow Park parking lot, I think you probably could, but I think it's more designated as a Borough parking lot.
I would, as we get more and more events, I would really like to see us consider doing something that's down there. Yeah, it's getting real bad.
I believe we did have an estimate on repaving that lot in, towards the end of '21 into '22. Obviously, that number would need to be revised at this point, but I don't recall.
It isn't gonna be the same or near the same.
Do you recall?
Yeah, it's gonna be, well, all the parking lots, this lot here, the meeting center, up there with Rivers Park, and the parking lot down here, it was always put in to the roads, you know, and then in when Tony was here. But what happened is, roads got expensive over the years. It used to be when I first came here, you could do 10 roads for $100,000. Can't do that now. You could do maybe one road for $100,000. So it's a big change. So I've been putting parking lots in, trying to get them done, but like Andy said, they ask them out of the general funds, so they have to be used, you know, let, you know, I have the money there to do it.
You could probably make a case that it could come out of the amusement towns.
Yeah. Well, that's true, since NCR is using that parking lot a lot.
Yeah, we do have to have stormwater work, you know, like other brothers, you know, which you mean at Rivers Park. So, you know, that's gonna be an extra expense there. We've been working on putting some stormwater in with that.
I would just ask that we keep it under consideration.
And you used to, these guys used to do a road committee and stuff years ago, where you sat down and discussed all this and stuff. I don't know what happened, whatever happened to those committees and stuff. You used to have, I thought that was pretty good, because you used to have a committee that came back to the council and said, you know, this is what I think we need to be doing.
Recommendations.
Yeah. So, I mean, just on the roads.
Not a bad idea.
And there used to be a water and a road committee and a sewer committee, and there was always three councils under all the committees, and they would talk to the department heads and find out what was going on, what they needed and all that. And I'm, that just kind of lost thirty years, I guess. I don't know. Used to work, though, years ago.
Wouldn't it be bad to set up a water and a road committee?
Well, I mean, we have, we have an infrastructure committee. Rather than creating more committees, I think probably able to utilize the ones that are already established. Maybe tweak the duties a little bit.
Can we look at that for the reorder for January?
Sure.
Let's do that.
So the only other, we talked about the recreation fund changes. The only other change, we talked about the capital reserve fund and eliminating the truck that was put in your original proposal. Since the last meeting, we have an issue with a truck that services a wastewater treatment plant. And unfortunately, it needs over $12,000 worth of work. It has a knock in the engine and needs cam phasers and needs some other work. So the, it's a 2013 with approximately 77,000 miles on it. It works a little over 12,000. We already have a price of trade-in, and the trade-in allowance is $14,750. So kind of really doesn't make sense to put $12,000 into a 10-year-old vehicle.
It's a trade-in allowance as it sits?
Yes. Yeah. And we already provided the information that there's some issue with the engine, that they would have to diagnose it, and they provided the trade-in allowance. So we did put in $40,000 out of the capital reserve to make that purchase in 2024 to replace that truck.
What kind of truck is it?
Right now, yeah, yeah, it's a pickup truck.
So would that replace the pickup truck that we have already set? I think it was $80,000.
That, that's eliminated, this is completely separate.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that was $80,000, this is 40.
That would be something that would have to be in the end split with Shrewsbury Borough, correct?
So that, yeah, the sewer, the sewer fund allocates money to the capital reserve fund through the proportionate share report as well as through a general contribution. So those, those assets that are contributed to the sewer fund are split up between that proportionate share report and between New Freedom Borough's operations.
So really that 40,000 would only be 20, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, yeah. Basically, yeah, in, in, in theory, yes, yeah.
I don't know the bill.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if it was a repair that was within reason, but we, we can't see spending $12,000 on a 10-year-old vehicle at this point.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
So other than that, those were the major changes from the last budget meeting. Uh, we did talk about salaries and hourly rates. Those are in the last page in your budget proposal there after the expenditures. Um, so those are the anticipated rates going into '24 for those positions.
What is the salary increase for boroughs this year?
It was put in at 4%.
For '23, you mean?
For '24, for, for this budget?
Those numbers include 4%.
4%?
Yeah.
With an extreme deficit that we're running under, we're doing 4%?
That's, didn't, that's what we did last year, isn't it?
Aye. This back sheet, I asked for a complete breakdown of salary and compensation. An hourly rate next to the positions isn't adequate. I'd like to address the two comments made at the beginning that I call it cleanup on aisle nine. The information that I bring forward is out of official borough limits and council meetings. And just because you don't like it or it makes your decisions look poor, don't malign my character or me. And I won't accept it and I won't tolerate it. I point out what our surrounding municipalities are doing because they're fiscally responsible. Ten years, including this year, no increases.
Well, unless you fed-
Excuse me, I have the floor.
You're correct, my fault.
They have the same EMS. Shrewsbury Borough is comparable to us in size and services. And to put this off as this, now I see it's a 2.3% millage recommendation. To put it off on emergency services is, is no. It is all the out-of-control spending as well as the bonds, those drawdowns, and the continued actions that this council takes by asking the most, uh, highly densely populated borough out of 36, the most, um, highly income-wise borough to continue to request that our citizens reach into their pockets is absolutely outrageous and why nobody else up here says anything about it and is just gonna rubber stamp it and go right along with it, I do not get it. I think you're doing a huge disservice. You were voted in to come up here and conduct business, uh, in the best way possible for the citizens that we serve. And to continue to bring budgets forward where the expenditure line is twice as high as the revenue and say what a great job everybody's doing is complete incompetence.
So I'm not sure why you, why you're indicating that these comments that I read came from you. Unless you fed those comments to someone else in the community.
I have spoke about all those.
Now, wait a second, you, I respected your, when you wanted to speak. Unless you fed these to someone else, this did not come from you. Unless you fed it to someone.
That was the election papers that were handed out, the talking points for this past election. Whoever came to the election and was handed a paper, those are the talking points they have because those are accurate, those are true. And just because a percentage doesn't look good and you don't want to wear it well, tell them to look away from a percentage and think about a dollar amount. You can look about it any way you want to look about it. However you look at it, it's historic. This, this amount of an increase is absolutely unheard of. And you should all be looking at ways to cut this and become more fiscally responsible and not giving 4% raises.
Well, first of all, 4% raises, I mean, that's, that's not unheard of. I mean, 4% is pretty much a standard right now. We, we had rampant inflation last year and we, we didn't go with the 8% that we had in inflation. We kept the raises down to five. Uh, we're not planning on doing five again this year, we're planning on doing four. But part of the charge, the cost of the EMS is salary. In fact, half a million dollars out of EM, of the EMS budget is just salaries and we're trying to keep people employed in EMS. If you take the numbers that we have in the budget, I mean, as an example, the, you know, if you take the $75,000 and you divide it by 1918, so you got, uh, 75,000 divided by 1918, that comes out to $39 per house. That's what, that's what EMS is costing. So when you look at a $104 tax increase and it's $104, $39 of that is going to EMS. Another, if you look at the police budget, the police budget for this year went from 770, help me out, from, to 770, from, I think, 706 or 707. I'm not looking at it, but that's $63,000. If you divide that by the number of houses, that's $33 per house. So you've got 33 and 39, whatever that comes up to.
72.
72, so $72 of the tax increase is due to EMS and police services. If you take on top of that the $45,000 for fire and you divide that by the 1918 houses, that comes up to an additional $23. Now you're looking at $95 of the tax increase. So when you say that we can't blame it on police or fire or EMS.
If all the extravagant spending didn't happen and all the funds to be drained down, you wouldn't be pointing over here and telling everybody to look at the EMS. You would have had your funds there available to cover this. You know, let's, let's-
What was pulled down? I don't, I'm not sure.
Let's just take, for instance, the valve turning machine. There was, it was not in the budget. It's just asked in a, in a meeting and it's voted on right that night, $90,000, not even accounted for in the budget. And how, what a great, you know, whatever that was.
That came out of general fund or water?
It's things like that.
It didn't come, it didn't come out of tax dollars.
Well, it, it came out of the capital reserve and it's not-
Came out of the capital reserve, but not-
Who's money is that?
Right, if capital reserve is funded through the general fund, the water fund and the sewer fund.
Who funds those funds? Who funds the general fund?
Santa Claus, right?
Prickles.
Well, I, I, you know the answer to the question.
Yeah, Santa Claus.
Santa Claus should be one of them there.
Quit asking ridiculous questions.
Ridiculous, you shy away from it, you act like it's your money.
I don't shy away from it, yes, it's absolute, it's, it's my money, it's your money, it's your money, it's all of our money.
It is my money and I'm here to learn about the process and so I do want to hear the answer. Saying, saying the answer is Santa Claus is very disrespectful to me as a taxpayer and your fellow council member.
Thank you.
My, my fellow council member wants us to say it's the people's money.
And I'm worried too.
It is, it is the people's money.
Thank you.
Where else would we get the money from?
I don't-
It's my money too and it's your money. It's the people's money.
Thank you.
And we do the absolute best that we can do. But when you're faced with increases of $70,000 to the police budget in one year and $70,000 to EMS in one year, it doesn't, you, we came up here, Erica came up here, Ryan came up here, Burnell, we, we ran and, and the mayor, we ran on a platform that we were supporting, police, fire and EMS. That's what our, our pledge was to the people of New Freedom. So here we are, what we're, what we're actually saying is, yes, we want the police and the fire and the EMS, we just don't want to pay for it. That's really what we're saying when we, we sit here and we talk about, we don't want to increase taxes to cover the expenses that are happening. I mean, we just went through a police contract and that, it's, it's, I mean, if you look at the budget, it's, went from 7, 706 to 770.
That was, that was actually my other question is, uh, where does a, a New Freedom resident access the budget? How do I access that budget?
The budget's online.
It's online, on the borough website?
The, the budget is not. Um, this, this proposed budget obviously is still working document. So once, once council gives their initial approval, which is to authorize advertisement, then it becomes, uh, for, for public inspection.
Only after it's voted on?
Well, it doesn't become the budget until it's advertised and the public gets to look at it.
As the proposed budget.
And then, as the proposed budget. And then it comes back and it's voted on in place.
Okay.
I have one question, the $90,000, was it a machine or what is it that we bought that wasn't in the budget? What was it? What was it we got?
It, it was a valve turning machine, Donnie, you wanna?
It's a valve turning machine and a vacuum system, the lead copper.
Okay, I just, I never heard of that.
Yeah, I mean, we actually, we actually wanted to get it for the lead copper survey, the D and P's making us do, uh, cause we're gonna be, end up probably digging a lot of sources up to determine if it was copper or lead or what.
Okay.
Jake, wasn't, wasn't it 80, $89,000?
That was wrong. That quote was given to you with two arms on it as a demo unit from the company. That quote is wrong. It's about 70, 70 some thousand dollars and it is much needed. You can shake your head as much as you want, but listen, if we didn't need it, we would not come to council with it.
And Jake, I'm not telling you that I didn't want you to have it.
That's all we here is, and it's 90,000 and we don't need it.
Because there were, there was no cost analysis, there was no business case, there was nothing put before me. I asked about-
Not before you, but we went through it.
I'm the council member, I need the information.
And we came to you as a collective group and said, listen, this is our recommendation because we, as the experts in the field, went through two machines, checked our pros and cons, and we came to you as a recommendation.
Absolutely, Jake, thank you for all that work, but I didn't get-
I have the work time, we spending a thousand dollars on hors d'oeuvres for the pickleball group. Pay that thousand dollars and give it to the EMS.
I did, I am here to be a good fiduciary of the money for the people and I appreciate you- Wait a minute, I appreciate you taking your time as the expert. I'm not claiming to be the expert in it. And if you did that, bring me the business case for why you need it. When I asked you, do we really need a Cadillac model, isn't there a different one? Can we go in with a borough around us? And I was told, well, we, we can't tell Ira to get up at 2:00 AM if something happens in the middle of the night. That's not a reason to try to go in, in partnership with another borough to, to really, uh, take care of our costs.
We talked with other boroughs, they are not interested in it. They went out and bought their own and found that the other one that was a piece of junk that they bought doesn't work. That's why we couldn't go in halves with them. They were unwilling to work with us. We told you that that night, I sat here and told you that.
It, it was that if something happened in the middle of the night.
And it's not a Cadillac, it's not a Cadillac edition.
I don't know, I, I didn't get the opportunity to look at others, to see what was available. It's just a huge expense, much like the, the, I don't mean to be public works, but a $5,000 upgrade that turns into a $500,000 for the public. It's those sort of things where, uh, you know, cockroaches.
What was the last one you just said I am?
The, the Public Works building. It started out at, uh, $5,000.
For bunks?
Bunks into a 575,000 dollar repair and then the cockroach was, was a little one. Now it's turned into that. Things that are wrong get left to deteriorate, deteriorate, deteriorate. And then you got a huge problem on your hands and it's-
You just said it, you just hit the nail on the head. I will, I will give you guys credit, okay? I've been here since 2011, Donnie's been here since the eighties, okay? You guys up there and Andrew as a borough manager are playing catch-up for the last 20 years in neglect, 30 years in neglect, okay? The woman that set his position probably should have been taken out of here in silver, silver braces. That is where your frivolous spending went and now we are playing catch-up.
Well, you have council members up here that were there then.
And they know about it.
It's?
I don't see any kind of changing.
We're playing, we're playing catch-up. We are playing catch-up, just like Andy said, the bonds, the, all that other spending. We put a water line in that we didn't have money for. Why did she go and, and spend that money? We don't know. She told us one day that we had all this money and the next day we got nothing. The next day she gets mad at North Tidora Township because she's not an elected official there anymore and we spent $50,000 on a machine. Why?
That sort of stuff is still happening.
Quit kicking Andy such a hard time, he's doing a great job and you're sitting there hounding on him every meeting.
Because of the decisions that are being made.
Because in your eyes it doesn't look right. But you guys make that decision.
I haven't been making these decisions.
You vote.
I'm one, yeah, and I'm one of the only ones that votes no.
Did you vote for a thousand dollars to be added to the rec fund last month, last meeting?
I did, yes, I did.
And it's for hors d'oeuvres.
But you know what, Jake, why don't you go over the last two years and add up the no votes? I think I'm gonna outrank everybody up here.
I get it, and that's-
I don't go scampering and go along here long game.
That's frivolous spending, a thousand dollars for hors d'oeuvres as an appreciation. Tell that to the people when that thousand dollars isn't there to save their ass when they need that ambulance at their house.
But that's not coming out of the borough, that's coming out of borough.
Why are you talking about it ain't coming out of the borough?
The thousand dollars, the thousand dollars.
Where does your rec fund come from? It comes out of the borough, out of the tax line, that's the borough money, right?
The $400,000 pickleball court, that was a frivolous expense, not the thousand dollar hors d'oeuvre.
I don't have a shovel.
A thousand dollar pickleball? Dude, I'll tell you what, you don't deal with pickleball like I do every day and they don't make money. $400,000, you don't understand, is-
Jake, we're gonna, we're gonna-
It's ridiculous, you guys are crazy.
Mr. Mayor, what is the process here, by the way, in terms of public comment? Comment from the bench, it's my first meeting, I just don't know when it's appropriate to speak or not speak, it's been kind of backwards.
Well, this is all inappropriate, but we kind of let it happen.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine. Um, what we normally do is we have a public comment at the beginning and a public comment at the end. And that's when the public comment is supposed to happen. However, we are fairly lax with that. So if somebody has a question- So if somebody has a question, like you had a question, uh, we, we certainly want to answer those questions, we don't want you to be left in, left in the dark. So if you raise your hand, chances are, as long as council's not in the middle of debating something, then we'll, we'll answer your question.
Yeah, just a, just a comment and then a question, so, um, I've, I've served in senior leadership positions for three different publicly traded companies, all of which had over five billion dollars in annual sales. Currently in a senior director role, very much in tune to the market, and raises this year amongst large cap companies have been very close to zero. Um, and as a matter of fact, payrolls are really starting to get compressed, and so, um, I'm just wondering what you're benchmarking to come up with four percent for next year, because in the private economy, that is not happening, in fa- in fact, I think what we're likely to see in two thousand twenty-four could be something similar to two thousand nine, where employees will be getting five percent get backs and things like that. That's the direction that I see things heading, I understand twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we're talking about eight, nine percent CPIs, but that's come down, wages don't usually mirror the CPI altogether, and four percent just seems really high to me based on what I'm seeing in the private economy.
I spent most of my time in the public sector and that's, what you said is absolutely true for the, for the, for the private sector. The, the public sector, even now, we're having trouble keeping people in EMS, because basically they're getting paid what you could go to rudders for and, and, and get a job at rudders, just, you know, basically being a checkout person. Um, so part of the EMS increase that you see in the budget, the seventy-five thousand dollars, is to try to retain employees. Our employees in Public Works, I think they make a fair salary, but you know, it's certainly not anything to write home about. Their benefits are, are good, and, but if you have a family, you know, they're making, you know, they're making in the twenty-four dollar an hour range. Uh, four percent is not unheard of for the public sector.
Federal for next year is five point two.
Sorry?
Federal for twenty twenty-four is five point two percent.
Yeah, so that could kind of.
Social Security sure is.
Yeah, Social Security is, is five point two, so I mean, you know, so we, we kind of look at the.
Three point.
No, that's not true.
Sorry?
You just, excuse me sir, but you just said five point something for Social Security, I think that number is inaccurate for twenty twenty-four.
I said federal workers.
For federal workers, I'm sorry, not Social Security.
Just five point two for federal workers.
Social Security is three point two plus an interest.
Insert one, one more thing, um, you know, as a, as a senior director, if, if I were to exit my position for, for any reason, my severance would be one, uh, one week for every year of service with my, with my company. Am I, am I under, am I to understand that there is a request?
That, that's inappropriate to ask at this time, because we're not, we're talking about the budget. We, we can't just keep jumping around from topic to topic, that was a request, we're going to address that at some, at some future time, but not, not now, we're talking about the budget right now.
Okay, all right, cause I just, I think that, um, I think that that's something that members of Borough would be very interested in.
Oh, absolutely, and that, that'll all be done in, in public and, and you'll, you'll get to voice your opinion on that. But right now, we're talking about the budget.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Do we have a round numbers to what the average tax bill is?
For the, for.
Under tax for talking, which I gather is.
For New Freedom or the?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, the increase is about, well, actually, we, you dropped it to, it's gonna be less, less than a hundred dollars.
What was the average total tax? Is it thousand dollars, five thousand dollars?
Which, which tax you talking about? Borough tax or not?
You're talking about a borough tax.
The book, which I'm looking at.
For a borough.
Yeah, the, the average, uh, tax bill, excuse me. The average tax bill in New Freedom for your municipal tax to include the, uh, fire tax for next year would be five hundred and seventy-seven dollars on an average assessed property in New Freedom.
Per year?
Per year, that includes five hundred and nineteen of general millage and fifty-eight dollars in fire tax millage. So that would split up a little bit, because that number doesn't have the EMS, so it would break a little bit more out of that general to be split out.
It sometimes helps to work with numbers rather than percentages as opposed to twenty-four.
Well, that's kind of what we've been trying to do, again, your, your, the tax increase is a hundred dollars. I mean, we're not talking, and I, I, I don't like to use the word only, because I also am on a fixed income. So only doesn't really count anymore for me, I mean, if it's a hundred dollars, it's a hundred dollars out of my pocket. So, but we're still, are talking about a hundred dollars, and for that, when you get, hit nine one one, you're gonna get police, fire and EMS.
What we say only a hundred dollars we need from when do we land?
From last year to this year.
Based on an average assessment of two hundred and seven dollars.
Correct.
Two hundred and seven thou- yeah. Difference between last year and, and next year would be a hundred and four dollars.
What's the average rise in assessments year over year that we can see, Andy, over the last three years?
Here?
Yeah, in, in the borough. The. Or assessed value? Yeah, the assessed value, I'm sorry, I've kind of spun around here. Uh, twenty twenty-one to twenty, uh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, the assessed value increased by point seven five percent. So that went from three hundred and, I'm just gonna round these, three hundred and seventy-five million to three hundred and seventy-eight million. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, it went, uh, up by point nine eight percent, which equated to uh, three seventy-eight to three eighty-two. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, the assessed value increased by one point two seven percent. So it went from three hundred and eighty-two million to three hundred and eighty-six million. So every year we're about average, unfortunately, I couldn't go back and get those assessed values beyond twenty twenty, but you know, you're averaging right around point nine percent increase in assessed value. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
So we, we do get, we do get a tax increase just from value, probably.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct.
Comes up not quite a percentage yet, not point nine, what do you say?
Well, it's a little less than a percentage, and that's just obviously based on the market, based on the building. Um, you know, we've had a little bit of building over the last couple of years, so I would expect that number to.
That's a good point, we don't want to bring new houses that weren't there before, so for nothing else, we would see probably something more than a percentage per year. Rounding in, I don't know how many houses in that building, so we're looking at percentage a year there. The new increase is actually twenty-six and some percent, if you take that back to twenty eighteen, that's a forty-seven percent increase in those, over those years. That's not quite fifty percent, so your five hundred, five hundred dollar tax bill becomes seven fifty?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow. The.
Five hundred and seventy-seven dollars a year times forty-seven percent increase from twenty sixteen to the proposed twenty-four would be about two hundred and fifty dollars per household, not quite a fifty percent increase in that. I didn't follow your example, the building debt was too.
The, the five, the five hundred, the five nineteen.
The five hundred and seventy-seven, I believe, so.
Five seventy-seven, that'll work, uh, the five seventy-seven is what it would be this year in twenty twenty-four.
And that would have been more like.
We have to work backwards, so that would be just a twenty-five percent increase.
Right, yeah.
So five seventy-seven becomes a six twenty?
It's not six twenty, I mean, you're talking about what, if it goes up again next, the following year or?
Is this five seventy-seven counting a twenty-five percent increase?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have to actually work backwards, it would have been more like three hundred in twenty eighteen, so it's now five seventy-seven, three fifty. Point is, we, the taxes have gone up about forty-seven percent since twenty eighteen counting the increase, that's an awful lot of increase.
When our sister municipalities have went up, zero.
Well, some have went up, but many have gone down.
No, right, and I, actually Shrewsbury Borough, I believe, uh, in those ten years, they had went down by twenty percent. So they haven't raised theirs around us, but look at since twenty eighteen, what you're saying how we've went up.
Right, well, the point is, we're looking here, there's two pieces of bread, one is the increase in the rate, the other is the increase in the base, either by the property going up or by building more houses.
Well, it's very.
So we have a built-in increase, and when you increase, you get both that.
I, I think it's, I think it's unfair to talk about what, I mean, unless I sit down and look at Shrewsbury Borough and I figure out how many houses have been built and what the valuation is of those houses, I don't know what the actual income has gone up, I've not looked at Shrewsbury Borough's structure per se to figure out what that is, I, I just haven't, so I, I can't.
Wouldn't that be important benchmark though?
You know, I know that Glen, I know that Glen Rock. I'm sorry?
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be relevant, would that be important benchmark to know that we're kind of within?
Well, yes and no, I mean, we, again, we're looking at New Freedom Borough and what we are required to have here, we know that our EMS portion of the budget for EMS is seventy-five thousand and theirs is about a hundred and nine thousand, so we, and that's based on call volume, that's, that's what, that's how we, we came up with that. The mayor and I sit on the EMS committee, so that's how that was derived, that's fair, and we thought that, that it was fair based, based on call volume. So we're trying to do what's best for New Freedom Borough. And, and before I get, before I forget, I apologize for my Santa Claus thing, I was being flipped and frustrated, but I do apologize for that.
But if it is useful to have a baseline, I'll look at a Toyota and Ford, I won't just pay more for the Ford because it costs more than maybe.
That, that would only work if you were planning on moving to Shrewsbury Borough.
Could happen.
It could happen, you know, but I mean, if, if you're not planning on moving to Shrewsbury Borough or if you're not coming here and trying to figure out which would be the better place to live, I do understand that it's not bad to know what it is, and we actually do compare a lot of things to Shrewsbury Borough when we're talking sewage, when we're talking EMS, when we're talking, you know, we do that. But this budget is New Freedom Borough's budget, and the question on the table here is, is this a good budget? And does it have in it enough so that we can have the emergency services, police, fire and ambulance, which are the primary things with, that have gone up, is there enough money in here to cover that? And the, and the answer to that question is yes, there is enough money in there, in here to cover that. Do we want to cut anything? I don't think we do, Mayor. I, I, so I mean, I think that we need to be a safe community, we are an aging population, I'm seventy. Something happens to me, I want to hit nine one one and have an ambulance there, and that's why we're trying to get EMS services beefed up to the point where we have a safe, sustainable EMS system.
And self, self, yes, self-sustainable, you know, like Jake was saying, uh, previously, things just kind, got swept under the carpet. You know, we had to go with paid EMS versus volunteer, that costs us six hundred thousand dollars a year. And we finally said, we're not picking up all the balance of this, if Shrewsbury Township, Shrewsbury Borough, Cudores Township, everybody around us is gonna use our service and not pay proportionately for it. Now we're trying to play catch-up, because we need a new ambulance, we need to have an old ambulance reconfigured onto a new chassis, now we've got a fire department that's running into some antiquated equipment and needs to be replaced, and we've put forty-five thousand dollars a year in an MOU to be able to help them to pay for that, which is gonna help you as citizens, it wasn't taken care of before. I'm gonna say something and somebody will kick me in the butt for it, I have been pushing for an EMS tax since I became mayor for three years, okay? Yes, we have made donations, but what was really needed, and this year, you know, everybody's agreed, we need to have an EMS tax, that's where my.
And that barely went.
Has been.
And the seventy-five thousand dollars that is in here as a line item in the budget is the start of the EMS tax. And Shrewsbury Borough has recognized that they're going to have to do likewise to come up with a hundred and nine thousand dollars every year for, to fund EMS. Um, there, you know, we've looked at going outside for EMS, going to Wellspan or UPMC. The problem with that is when Wellspan or UPMC does not make money, you know, which we don't a lot of times, when they don't make money, they pull out and they leave you stuck, so we're, rather than do that, we're having our own EMS, and that will be, as the mayor says, sustainable.
Well, there's, there's lots of things to consider, I don't state that flaw, you mentioned you're on fixed income, and if things go up, uh, maybe you think about, maybe I'm not gonna go on a cruise, uh, I'm not gonna get a new car, I'll get two more years out of the old Toyota. You make choices, and you all make choices.
Sure.
You get to go to Social Security and say, oh, it's tight this year folks, I need some more, you know, my car's got a problem, I need some more.
And believe me, we have done that, I think extremely well, under the tutelage of our borough manager and our Public Works people. We've pushed some things to the limit, and after a while it catches up to you.
You don't only leave problems in burial, just because you can't see the pipe till it bursts, yeah, I understand, that's good.
And speaking about pipes.
There's a trade to be made between cutting back on what we don't have to spend and just continuing to go to bank for more.
I don't think anybody realizes the expense and work that's been put into the infrastructure of this town in the last two years, that was not done previous, and it all caught up with us. Luckily, we were able to split some of that, what was it, the gas company paid for part of it? The paving and everything, all Constitution, we put in new, new gas, new water lines. You, you can't comprehend the problems, the wells that you, that we have to save you money as, as all of us as residents here, but there are things that have not been taken care of that we're kind, kind of playing catch-up now.
You probably have had better success talking about efficiencies that you came in with and why they need to be improved, which doesn't sound like we really talked about.
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think, I was trying to find a chart in here that shows how our budget is split out, but I think something important to remember is that out of this five hundred and seventy-seven dollars that we pay in our taxes to the borough, most of that goes to fire, EMS and police. We have very, what is it, Andrew, about a hundred dollars out of that, I think, that goes to Public Works and the rest of everything? I don't have, I can't, couldn't find the chart.
As far as your real estate tax?
Right.
Your, your real estate tax just barely covers emergency services.
Right, so out of, out of, out of this tax that you're, you're paying, you're getting limb picked up, you're getting the leaves, leaves picked up, you're getting the infrastructure of, of the, uh, of the stormwater management, you're getting, uh, snowplows, you're snowplowed every year. I mean, Public Works. I mean, Public Works does a lot, and really, it's a very small portion of your tax bill. Most of the tax bill is fire, police, and EMS.
I just want to direct them, the borough meeting, the last borough meeting is on the borough website, and they discussed at length the deficit that they were dealing with. The videos are posted for you to watch.
For the record, Shrewsbury Borough has approximately one thousand six hundred homes. Again, comparable to New Freedom.
That's about nineteen eighteen, that's how many houses we have.
Nineteen eighteen, yeah.
And again, I recall Franklin Square being sold to the residents as keeping our taxes down.
I was going to ask, rental property across from Seven, what did that company who just brought in tons of rentals and a despopulated area, what did they do to help upgrade our community?
They paid the taxes.
But those taxes are very little over every year, but they put an extreme burden immediately on us.
Our taxes have been raised the last three years. So how did Franklin Square help? It was sold out, it was going to keep our taxes down with more revenue.
They are, the people in there, they're paying the real estate tax to the companies.
The company that owns these buildings.
Why did our taxes go up if it was supposed to help keep our taxes down to have them come in?
Just imagine what it would be if they weren't here, if we weren't growing.
How much revenue do we get a year from Franklin Square?
But also, my school tax has now grown because of them, too.
Why would your school taxes be going up?
We're adding students, we're getting renovations for the schools.
That was long, that was done and voted on long before-
I know, I've been at the meetings, but what I'm saying is, we keep adding all these homes, these construction companies come in and make money, giant well sums of money. Why are they not helping our infrastructure, too, to get permission to build here?
Yeah, there's a whole process. You don't just slap the development up. I mean, there's an entire process that needs to be followed through zoning and land development and the payment of those fees that we talked about earlier, including recreation fees and tapping fees, to make those improvements to the infrastructure. So as the mayor mentioned, that development was approved many times over multiple different phases and multiple different businesses, and it just adapted into this. But as long as those companies meet the regulations of that municipality, you can't stop development. You can limit that, but-
What's the revenue Franklin Square brings in?
The assessed value of those parcels, I'd have to look up exactly what all those buildings are assessed at on these individual parcels and add everything up. I can get that number.
It's got to be a lot.
It is, yeah.
And then, the last meeting, you referenced, there was a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar savings?
Sorry?
A three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar savings through water was kind of, was kind of confusing.
Oh, you mean, yeah, there's-
What was that in reference to?
Let me just check. Yeah, it actually does come out to three hundred and seventy thousand. But yeah, each house over York Water Company saves a hundred ninety-three thousand, a hundred ninety-three dollars on their water bill every year by using our own water company, which is run through Public Works. So the point being was that, you know, Public Works costs us very little because the water saves us a hundred ninety-three dollars each over York Water Company.
So you're not saying, this is just play money, pretend, there's not an extra three hundred and seventy thousand somewhere, this is just-
What I was saying was, if we shut down our water system and just used York Water, it would cost us, as a community, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's not play money.
Well, I mean, it's not real money, it's not being applied anywhere. It's not money that was saved, and now you can show in the line item where it is and where it's going to be used. This is just- That's why I'm asking, to see what he said and if it was real money or just-
Well, it's real money that we're saving. So if you save money, it's the same thing as not spending it. So, yeah, I mean, we would each have to pay an extra hundred ninety-three dollars for our water every year if we didn't have our own water. That was the point.
Sounds a lot like the Inflation Reduction Act, those kinds of savings, right?
Are we going to have to go replace, is that the water tank that's going to need to be replaced and everything?
Well, we're hoping it's not.
Valves thing?
Yeah, I mean, if we do have to replace the water tank, that's going to be a big expense, and we'll have to reevaluate at that point, yes.
I think a hundred and ninety-three would be better than the three point five million or whatever I heard earlier.
Well, even if, I mean, it's three hundred and seventy thousand a year, so I guess if you actually had to do, and again, this is kind of a buy the seat of the pants, but if it's three point five million divided by three hundred and seventy thousand, it would take us nine and a half years to recover that amount of money. So if we have to put it in and we decide to keep doing what we're doing, then we would recover the cost of the tank in nine and a half years.
How old is our tank now?
It's basically defunct. I mean, we can't, we can't really-
We're not using it right now.
Right, we're not using it.
So we have another one.
So do we need one then?
Was it fifteen years or how long? Thirty, or which one?
Do we need one?
Their tank's nineteen eighty-two, was put in, did it ever redecorated?
But it was used, it was using different materials that just didn't hold up, and I think EPA would probably turn down the water quality that was coming out of that tank, am I correct?
Yes. Well, the other thing was, we couldn't rotate the water out of it because of putting in a tank.
But if we haven't been using one for ten years, you said, fifteen?
Well, it's not been that long now. I'd say maybe like about three to five years now.
Why do we need one then?
That's the question I'm asking. That's why we need the engineers to do the study to find out.
That's why-
Andy Bobbys is the one that actually came to light with that and said that to me, and I thought to myself, you know what, let's investigate and find out. Maybe we don't have to spend three million dollars, but we have to have the engineer study to be able to determine that, so.
Yeah, and hopefully, we won't need the tank, we won't spend the three and a half million dollars, and we'll be fine, so.
Yeah, I'll look here, I'm trying to see if it's one-two.
No, I get it. I'm just, do we need an engineer to tell us if we've been fine for?
Actually, it has to come through, yeah. We really need that.
Yeah, almost everything has to go through engineers nowadays. You can't do anything without-
But we've been operating without an engineer for eight years?
Oh, no, we have engineers on contract under services for-
But they've been fine with us operating without a tank for the eight years?
No, 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 we have a water tank. Since I were here on Ford, that is the water tank that we're using. The other water tank was for part of the old system before they put that one in in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. The reason that we are trying to not use that tank is by keeping York Water. We have enough in reserve if we have an emergency. We talked, Erica, I think, brought it up last meeting, that it was, what was it, Erica, like a million dollars in ten years?
It's a million dollars that we're going to have to pay, yes.
By doing that figure, we could pump water and keep taking water from York Water, providing, well, our wells provide enough water that we really wouldn't possibly need York Water, but we do need an emergency backup. That covers that fix for DEP. By spending the hundred thousand a year, we could pump another thirty years before we have to go and spend three point five million dollars on a tank that we might not need. But we have to dock those eyes, and cross those keys with engineers, with DEP, to go through all that.
Which is not cheap.
No, I think not.
So, back to the budget.
I was able to pull the tax duplicate for twenty-three and for Franklin Square. So in, I can't see their school tax, but I can kind of figure it out. On, to the county, they're paying about ninety thousand dollars a year. To the municipality, about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, and about a little over three thousand in fire tax.
That includes all the properties from Franklin Square, the commercial and the residents?
It does.
Some of the properties weren't online, though, right?
That's all the ones that are assigned to parcel ID bill, yeah. Now, I believe they did previously appeal their assessed value, and that did fail. I'm sure they will appeal again.
Yeah, well, all right, thank you.
I believe there's a map there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe there's a map there. You can't add those percentages that way, but it's a small thing.
Oh, okay. I'll take a look at it from later. Well, what we have, I'm sorry?
You can't add percentages, you've got to go back to the base numbers, add them up and identify.
He's an engineer, by the way.
All right, I'll take a look. Anyway. Again, what we have here is a budget that works for New Freedom Borough. I don't think there's a lot of fat in it. I think there's some things that I'm definitely not happy with. I'm not happy with the community center losing sixty thousand dollars a year. But again, yeah, we have to kind of decide, you know, what we're going to do with that. And that's going to be a challenge for us in the next year or so, as we get to the point where we're probably going to have to replace the HVAC system. So kind of like not putting the twelve thousand dollars into the truck, you're going to have to decide, do we not want to put the money into the HVAC system? So, so am I happy with everything? No, but it's a budget that works, and it's a budget that's, I think, is good for New Freedom Borough and its citizens. You know, I appreciate the fact that whenever we vote yes, you vote no, but that doesn't mean we're rubber stamping things, Erica. It just means that that's what we feel is best for New Freedom Borough. I really wish we could cooperate more. I do respect your opinions, I listen to your opinions, but I don't agree with what you're saying a lot of the times, and the council votes accordingly, so-
You and I are the only two that talk up here. I've been up here about two years, you're not a council member. But the council members that have been here for the two years that I've been here-
That doesn't mean they're not listening and making a decision.
They do not have any input generally. As for tonight, I don't know that any of them have really spoken and-
Well, Dave spoke, and last week or last meeting, Burnell was bringing up an example, and you shot him down because he was talking about Hanover Borough.
He was talking about the nation, and that wasn't relevant, I felt, but we're an hour and a half in and not, you know, so.
Well, the purpose of the meeting isn't to criticize council members, the purpose of the meeting is to come up with a budget.
I'm saying that I would like engaged council members that come with questions and desire to, you know, look fully into the matter and not just make motions and say, hey.
And that motion is not on the table, the budget is on the table. Perhaps you can talk to the individual council members offline and see if you can get something else from that. Do we have any other question? Yes, sir?
I'd like to say something. I don't want this misconstrued either.
Okay.
I have been, I was an EMT for thirty-five years. I put a lot of my life into that fire department of Olin Hill. And I know things are very expensive, but my only concern is next year, we have EMS and fire come to us next year and say, we need fifteen more percent. And I feel that eventually, and it was talked about thirty years ago or more, that fire companies have to come together as well as EMS. Now, eventually, I think Wellspan or UPMC will take it all over, because what they will do is if we pay our EMTs twenty-five dollars, they'll pay them thirty. And that'll be the end of community EMS and fire. They talked about paid fire years ago. It never happened. They talked about a station between Glenroton and Frehman Shrewsbury, but it never happened. Things have to give because expenses are so high. And my only concern is, next year, they'll be here asking for more because they'll want to raise their salaries and ambulances cost more, and like I said, that's my only concern.
I don't disagree with you at all, Benny. I mean, you really have to nail on ahead, as we, I mean, we've just seen the police budget go from seven oh-six to seven seventy. It'll probably, I would be, if I had to make a bet, it's probably going to be our share, probably be somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars for the following year. Nothing is going to go down, everything is going to go up. And it's up to us to continue to try to look at things. And again, one of the things that we need to look at is the community center. There's other things that are in the budget that we can look at, but our borough residents are getting a lot of services for the little bit of money that they're paying into the borough coffers. And I'm talking not about emergency services, I'm talking about what's left over to pay for the limb pickup, the, everything that Public Works does for the citizens. It costs very little for that. The big drivers are the EMS part of the budget. We already know that if we go to paid fire, paid fire is probably going to be, what, you figure, about one and a half million dollars?
I thought it was closer to two million.
Yeah, so one and a half to two million dollars, and-
EMS would probably be about the same, maybe a little bit more. You know, some of the other municipalities are, can't get paramedics, so they're hiring paramedics from Wellspan, and they're getting ninety-six hours a month, and they're paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for one paramedic. With what we're doing here now, our long-term goal, okay, is to have a chase truck with a paramedic stationed nearby Shrewsbury, probably, in one of their extra bays, because we can't take the chance. You deserve better than having to be on the phone. Grandma's got a cardiac arrest or a heart attack, and the next due is Jacobus, which is going to be twenty-minute wait. Who else is there that's going to save Grandma? It's happened, believe me, it has happened in this town. And that's what we want to absolutely avoid, you know, having to go through that. But that costs money to support them, to get a chase truck, to get another paramedic. I'm going to put this in here, too. They are doing their due diligence with hiring another company, billing company, that is doing a fantastic job, a better job than what the company they had before. And their major problem is, people just don't pay. And they don't want to take them to court, but they've come to the assumption that maybe that's what we're going to have to do. With a $1,500 ambulance bill and we get $300, they owe us. It's a business now, and we've got to treat it like a business. I'm volunteered to go up there and make phone calls, "Hey, maybe you didn't realize, but you still owe the fire department $300. When can we expect your check?"
One second. I have a thing, fun about EMS. For our next meeting, I would like to know for that rental ordinance, in the past maybe four years, house fires, how many were rentals, how many were homeowners? If you can come back with that.
I just want to make sure, like, it is the borough's responsibility to offer EMS?
We must.
It is the borough's responsibility to offer fire and EMS.
The, the state says that we have to have EMS.
So it's either paid or the volunteer that we have. And the paid is gonna be very expensive.
I didn't hear all that.
We, we have to offer either the volunteer that we have or the paid, which is gonna be way more expensive.
The state says that we have to have it, they don't say that we have to fund it. That's why, that's why a lot of them are going out of business.
Yeah.
And Denny, to your point, like, obviously, if they come back next year, is your, your guys right to say, "We can't give you anymore"?
Well, and, and part of this too is at the state level. You know, we know that if the state would pass a law mandating that the insurance companies give the money directly to the EMS companies instead of back to the subscribers, we know that we would have a lot more money for EMS, so. There's a lot of, lot of things that.
There is a bill in the House right now.
It's been in the House though for five years or six years, I think, so. Anyway, that aside, I would entertain a motion to advertise the budget.
There's no move.
Can you state the mileage rates for all three?
You should have, yeah, in your, behind the budget in the packet tonight is the meeting.
I'll just read the whole public notice.
Yeah, now, that's, that's based on what was discussed tonight.
Right, without change, right. Notice is hereby given, the proposed 2024 budget for the New Freedom, for the Borough of New Freedom is available for inspection from today's date until December 11th. Borough Council will consider passage of the 2024 budget and a tax levy ordinance imposing a 2.3 mil general real estate tax, a .28 mil fire tax, and a .2 mil EMS tax for the fiscal year of 2024 at the Borough Council meeting on Monday, December 11th at 6:30 PM at the Borough Office located here. Budget and copies of the proposed tax ordinance are available for review and inspection at the Borough Office Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM through 4 o'clock PM. And Rynch, a Borough manager. That would be the motion that we would make to approve the, this advertisement to go up.
2.3, .28?
Uh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, uh, 2.3 would be the general rate. .28, which is unchanged, would be the fire tax rate. And .2 mil EMS, which would be a new EMS tax.
.20, okay.
.20, yes. So the total, the total between the general and the EMS would be 2.5, which is what we've been talking about.
2.3 plus 2.1, 2.78?
Yes, exactly.
I'm sorry, I thought she said 2.5.
You said 2.5.
I'm sorry, I, what I said was 2.3 general plus the .2 EMS. But the total would be 2.78, correct?
Right.
But the .28 hasn't changed from last year.
I'll second a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry?
Dennis made the motion and then Dave seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vows?
No.
My vote is aye.
Just a quick question on the, uh, fire calls. Are you looking for, um, calls where there was damage to the property? Because I think they break it out as the type of call and then the amount of damage sustained by the property. Do you want to see those numbers or?
Just if they were called out for, out of the fold or get paid a fire.
Where there was damage.
And just, you're looking just at New Freedom?
Yes.
They can, they can pull those, yeah.
They may not know whether they're rentals or not.
If they, I mean, we can try to figure out.
I'm gonna make a motion if you, sir. I'm gonna make another motion if you, if you, uh, if you stand for it. And it's not to have anything to do with taxes. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just don't want them to leave and then think that, that we were done.
Correct. Motion doesn't have anything to do with the expenditure of funds or anything?
That's correct.
Correct.
It has to do with the agenda item for the rental ordinance that we were, Erica was just talking about.
We can't do that now.
Can't do that.
It's continuation meeting. Think I can.
But we couldn't talk about anything else?
I didn't know, because it's not on the agenda.
Oh, because it's not on this agenda? I could do it next, I mean, we could add it.
Well, you can't even do that anymore.
It's not a bonus.
Well, that's right, they changed that.
What are you trying to do?
I was trying to give, uh, direction to the committee, but, um, I could talk to them offline, but I, I hate to do that without having everybody. So I guess what I'll do is I'll just bring it up next time.
You want to take action on something tonight?
It's not action, it's just, I, I just, it's, I just want to redirect what the committee is going to be looking at based on some of the laws that are pertinent. So, it's all right, we'll do it next time.
Well, if you're not gonna make a, if you're not gonna make a motion, can't we do it just as a discussion?
I, I, I think it was on the previous agenda, it was discussed and moved on and not mentioned for continuation. I, I don't think it would be advisable to.
Yeah, we're fine, it's okay. I mean, if you'd like, we can talk about it. I mean, I can still talk to the committee, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, I would like that.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. We're good.
Motion adjourned?
I have a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Vows? My vote is aye.
Yeah, I'll tell you where. I'll push it back, I'm coming to work out, I can get off at like 2:50. Still, let's see, this one, once, and I'll start. Uh-oh, word out already?